All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. We are going to kick off our study session on Arts Destination Marketing and Destination Events Funding. This is very timely as we jump into our budget season. I want to welcome all the many members of the public and our arts and culture community who are here today. Tony, let's start with the role.
Jimenez.
President.
Torres.
President.
Cohen.
Ortiz.
President.
Davis.
Dwan.
President.
Candellis.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
President.
Kameh.
Mayhem.
Here.
You have a form.
Great. Good morning. Well, hey, everybody. Very excited to jump into this study session. As we all know, we are blessed to have an arts and culture community of great breadth and diversity that adds so much to our civic and cultural life here in San Jose. I think we're also seeing that it's a real economic driver. We're seeing the rebound, particularly of our downtown, driven by this experience economy. And I think we want to all reflect on what are we, what are we learning, what are the opportunities? And while we do face a very tough budget cycle or two at the city, as does the state, I think it's important for us to think about where we can strategically invest to create a multiplier economically and, of course, civically and culturally for our community. So really looking forward to today's study session. I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Klein, our Director of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, to get things going.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you very, very much. And good morning to our valued community partners in arts, culture, and destination who do so much for our community. I'm Nancy Klein from the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. Today, we are indeed here to discuss potential ways to increase and diversify revenues for arts, culture, and destination events. Our presenters today include David Platner Saunders and Martin Cohen of the Cultural Planning Group. Carrie will share a little bit more about them as she moves further in the presentation. And of course, Carrie Adams Hapner, Office of Economic Development, Jim Shannon, City Manager's Budget Office. And we also have industry experts with us today, including Connie Martinez, SV Creates, amongst other things, Laura Shimaluski, Team San Jose Convention and Visitors Bureau, and John Poach, the San Jose Sports Authority. Downtown is experiencing a strong recovery, particularly on evenings and weekends in terms of visits to the downtown. San Jose is, in fact, outpacing other major cities when it comes to downtown gathering. In fiscal year 2223, city theaters achieved 98% of pre-pandemic events and brought in even more patrons than in pre-pandemic times. According to a recent University of Toronto study based on mobile phone data, visitors to downtown San Jose during the months of March through June 2023 reached 96% of 2019 levels, placing San Jose third nationwide, and do, that's not an error, nationwide, and the best performing city in California. People want to gather in downtown San Jose. Arts, culture, and events bring an ROI, a return on investment, enhancing downtown's vibrancy and furthering our efforts to be Silicon Valley's downtown while sharing our rich diversity. In today's presentation, and Carrie, if you'll go on to the next, thank you. Thank you. In today's presentation, you'll hear more about how the downtown is performing, how arts, culture, and events are currently funded in San Jose, and the enumeration of several different potential funding mechanisms or ways to diversify and increase revenue sources to support arts, culture, and destination events and do things like address deferred maintenance in our facilities. Now, I'll turn the presentation over to Carrie.
Thank you, Nancy, and good morning, Mayor and Council. Carrie Adams Hapner with the Office of Cultural Affairs, the Division of the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs that I oversee. It's such a pleasure to be with you today, and thank you for your interest in this topic. And I want to extend my appreciation to the community members that are here today and watching virtually as well. This morning, we have a presentation, as Nancy mentioned, that is going to be first reviewing the council's direction. We'll be discussing the scope and process for this report, local context, the economic impact of these three industries, and discussion for the opportunity for additional investments that can generate even greater impact. So we will close with the next steps for council's consideration and discussion. And I just want to quickly mention that the city of San Jose has been a longtime leader in which it has embedded its cultural affairs function within the Office of Economic Development. And it's in large recognition of the importance of the creative economy. So I just want to let the council know that we are a national leader in this area, and I really thank you for your support of that. The next, we, let me just, next slide. Thank you. The council's direction, that was part of the mayor's June budget message for fiscal year 2324, included, "Develop an agenda and facilitate a study session with the objectives and goals to explore different funding mechanisms that can be used to add more funds to the arts community," as outlined in the manager's budget addendum number 58. Set a council study session in the fall or winter of 2023, and include the feasibility of new arts funding when surveying voters for possible future revenues. So as Nancy mentioned, our goals for today are to talk about, to consider ways to diversify revenues for the arts, destination marketing, and destination events, with really the goals of supporting our revitalization and sustainability of the art sector, as well as sustainability of our own city-owned facilities, and amplify San Jose as a national destination, all with the goal of how to optimize the economic and fiscal impacts of these industries. To assist in the preparation for today's meeting, we contracted with the Cultural Planning Group to research financial models, benchmark San Jose to other cities, and engage stakeholders. The Cultural Planning Group is a leading national firm that advises cities and agencies on the creative economy. Principals David Platner Saunders and Martin Cohen bring experience in the arts, culture, events, convention and visitor bureaus, funding models, ballot measures, and local needs. Their client portfolio includes the National Endowment for the Arts, the California Arts Council, the County of Los Angeles, Washington DC, and the cities of San Diego, Los Angeles, Sacramento, and Philadelphia, just to name a few. And David Platner Saunders was the lead author of the city of San Jose's cultural plan called Creating Connection. So for this research, David and Martin met with an interdepartmental team of staff, as well, who all provided input on these different potential funding models, and convened an A-team member cross-sector advisory group who met four times. So I want to extend my deep appreciation to the community members and staff that contributed to this report. So as Nancy mentioned, we have this acronym that we've developed. It's called AD, and we've been kind of leading with this concept of AD equals ROI. Because as we thought about these three industries, you know, one of the key premises is that AD results on that ROI in addition to the wealth of community and cultural benefits. So the community benefits of these industries include creative self-expression, celebrations of cultural heritage, cross-cultural understanding, civic pride, education, a culture of innovation, place-making, public life, personal and public health, community development, and a return from social isolation. So there is an intersectionality of these AD industries, which represent a nexus of cultural, community, and economic development. So today, three of our advisory members will be joining us at the podium to share their key findings. So please welcome these subject matter experts. I'm going to ask you to come up to the podium now. We have SV Creates founder and former CEO Connie Martinez, Team San Jose Vice President of Marketing and Communications, Laura Shimaluski, and San Jose Sports Authority Executive Director John Poach. So thank you, Connie. Well, she's going to kick us off this morning, and thank you so much for being here with us today and your partnership on the recently released Arts and Economic Prosperity Study.
Thank you, Carrie, and thank you to the San Jose City team for actually getting us to this point. I've been in the cultural sector for over 20 years, and to be honest, this is the first time, in my view, that we've had this serious conversation about funding for the arts. So I have two slides to comment on. The first one, hopefully you saw it when we worked with the Americans for the Arts and shared that publication last fall. But the headline here is that arts and culture are an industry. We create jobs, we spend money, we, our audiences spend money, multiplier effect, and the tax revenue locally is estimated, based on our research, at $6 million and another $40 million for the state. Jobs approaching 5,000 and expenditures 300 million. And we also fuel small business through our audience. Next slide, please. And that's the multiplier effect, and I believe Mayhem referenced that multiplier effect. So the audiences spend, you know, almost $200 million. We have over 4 million audience members coming to our community. 25% of those are non-local. And then the average spending, as you can see from this chart or this slide, is $37 for local and, you know, $66 for, for non-local. So the headline here is that we are an engine in and of itself. And as Carrie mentioned, the benefits are far beyond just economics. So let's not forget that. And one, one thought I'd like to leave you with as you're deliberating today and listening, and by the way, thank you for listening today, is that, you know, in a multicultural community where historically the arts in the United States have been funded by the social elite and dominant culture, that's not who we are. And I think San Jose has an opportunity to demonstrate what a multicultural community can look like when it is investing in those things that not only drive the economic return, but also the social return, that long list that Carrie shared. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. And welcome, Laura Shimaluski.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, everybody. It's, it's an honor to be here to represent Team San Jose. What you're seeing is such a small part of what we do, but an important part. So as we were coming out of COVID, you'll remember, all our buildings were shut. Business travel was nothing. The city and our Board of Directors approved $1.2 million to invest in destination marketing. We know that our, our artists are our best storytellers, and our culture is our best call to action. So we worked with local artists to do all the creative, and we use arts events as a call to action to drive people into San Jose. As you know, the TOT feeds the Office of Cultural Affairs as well. So from that $1.2 million, we generated almost $36 million. That's incremental revenue. Because of the sophistication of advertising technology right now, we know we're not only able to highly target, but we're able to count our returns in very real dollars. So this is, in, this, these are people who actually saw our ads, who converted to real dollars in San Jose. So the good news is that this has happened two years in a row. We're thrilled to partner with our cultural agencies. And so you know, we're, we're mostly thrilled that as the fastest recovering city in San Jose, a part of that is the spotlight that the city and council has given us to talk about this. So we understand and appreciate your acceptance that we've had a digital footprint on for two years, 24 hours a day, to everybody who's interested in culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Welcome, John.
Mayor Ma'am, Vice Mayor Kamai, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. And thank you to council members Foley, Jimenez, and Davis for your leadership and guidance to the Sports Authority Board. You look at the economic impact numbers, and it's great. It shows a 23 to 1 return on the investments in the major sporting events revving to San Jose. But not everything is about the economic, civic pride of what these events create and the marketing and visibility they provide for our city. We are very, very strategic on what we want to bring to the city of San Jose. We're the first city in the nation to ever host US figure skating and USA gymnastics in the same calendar year. Never been done in the 70 years of the combined championships. And there are a reason why. They trust our city, they trust our leadership, and they trust our community. When I talk about the economic, 23 to 1 is great, but each of these events also bring a national audience, a television audience. And that's where the, how do you measure the marketing and visibility on primetime television? We show the SAP Center, and our beauty shots are San Jose. They're not the small city up north. We focus on that because of the pride we have. But the other important factor is the community we serve. People wonder, why is San Jose the ice center of the world for figure skating? We have so many legends: Peggy Fleming, Chris Yamaguchi, Rudy Galindo, Brian Botano. And because of that community, the Figure Skating Club in Northern California is so strong, they demand these events. Same with gymnastics, the gymnastics club in Northern California, volleyball. So that's why we try to bring these, because they're events our community want and our community needs. And we cannot do that without your leadership and trust in the destination events that we try to bring. And the last point I make is that we're strategic in what we want to bring, because we do all of our planning with Visit San Jose. Even though we're a separate entity, we make sure we meet with them. Are we bringing an event that is a need for that weekend, for our hotels, for our downtown sector? We don't want to bring an event when there's a mega conference. We already have that. So we try to be strategic in the planning so that we bring sporting events we planned two to three years out to fit those shoulders so that we keep a vibrant, urgent, and urban vibrancy in our downtown community. So again, thank you for your investment in destination events and sports, and we look forward to continuing to bring the best to San Jose.
Thank you. Thank you, John, and Laura, and Connie for your leadership. And each of your comments really underscore what we are describing as a virtuous cycle of success, a vital cycle of success, in which when you make investments in these AD industries, it in turn generates content and products, vibrancy and quality, and quality of place, which in turn drive tourism and economic impact, as well as And the tax revenue locally is estimated, based on our research, at six million dollars and another forty million for the state. Jobs approaching five thousand and expenditures three hundred million. And we also fuel small business through our audience. Next slide, please. And that's the multiplier effect. And I believe Mayor Mahan referenced that multiplier effect. So the audiences spend, you know, almost two hundred million dollars. We have over four million audience members coming to our community. Twenty-five percent of those are non-local. And then the average spending, as you can see from this chart or this slide, is thirty-seven dollars for local and, you know, sixty-six dollars for, for non-local. So the headline here is that we are an engine in and of itself. And as Carrie mentioned, the benefits are far beyond just economics. So let's not forget that. And one, one thought I'd like to leave you with as you're deliberating today or listening, and by the way, thank you for listening today, is that, you know, in a multicultural community, where historically the arts in the United States have been funded by the social elite and dominant culture, that's not who we are. And I think San Jose has an opportunity to demonstrate what a multicultural community can look like when it is investing in those things that not only drive the economic return, but also the social return, that long list that Carrie shared. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie, and welcome Laura Shemeluski.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, everybody. It's, it's an honor to be here to represent Team San Jose. What you're seeing is such a small part of what we do, but an important part. So as we were coming out of COVID, you'll remember, all our buildings were shut. Business travel was nothing. The city and our Board of Directors approved 1.2 million dollars to invest in destination marketing. We know that our, our artists are our best storytellers, and our culture is our best call to action. So we've worked with local artists to do all the creative, and we use arts events as a call to action to drive people into San Jose. As you know, the TOT feeds the Office of Cultural Affairs as well. So from that 1.2 million dollars, we generated almost thirty-six million dollars. That's incremental revenue. Because of the sophistication of advertising technology right now, we know we're not only able to highly target, but we're able to count our returns in very real dollars. So this is, these are people who actually saw our ads, who converted to real dollars in San Jose. So the good news is that this has happened two years in a row. We're thrilled to partner with our cultural agencies. And so you know, we're, we're mostly thrilled that as the fastest recovering city in San Jose, a part of that is the spotlight that the city and council has given us to talk about this. So we understand and appreciate your acceptance that we've had a digital footprint on for two years, twenty-four hours a day, to everybody who's interested in culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Welcome, John.
Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Kamai, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. And, and thank you to council members Foley, Jimenez, and Davis for your leadership and guidance to the Sports Authority Board. You look at the economic impact numbers, and it's great. It shows a twenty-three to one return on the investments in the major sporting events revving to San Jose. But not everything is about the economic. Civic pride of what these events create and the marketing and visibility they provide for our city. We are very, very strategic on what we want to bring to the city of San Jose. We're the first city in the nation to ever host US Figure Skating and USA Gymnastics in the same calendar year. Never been done in the seventy years of the combined championships. And there are a reason why. They trust our city, they trust our leadership, and they trust our community. When I talk about the economic, twenty-three to one is great, but each of these events also bring a national audience, a television audience. And that's where the, how do you measure the marketing and visibility on primetime television? We show the SAP Center, and our beauty shots are San Jose. They're not the small city up north. We focus on that because of the pride we have. But the other important factor is the community we serve. People wonder, why is San Jose the ice center of the world for figure skating? We have so many legends. Peggy Fleming, Chris Yamaguchi, Rudy Galindo, Brian Botano. And because of that community, the Figure Skating Club in Northern California is so strong, they demand these events. Same with gymnastics, the gymnastics club of Northern California, volleyball. So that's why we try to bring these, because they're events our community wants and our community needs. And we cannot do that without your leadership and trust in the destination events that we try to bring. And the last point I make is that we're strategic in what we want to bring because we do all of our planning with Visit San Jose. Even though we're a separate entity, we make sure we meet with them. Are we bringing an event that is a need for that weekend, for our hotels, for our downtown sector? We don't want to bring an event when there's a mega conference. We already have that. So we try to be strategic in the planning so that we bring sporting events we planned two to three years out to fit those shoulders so that we keep a vibrant, urgent, and urban vibrancy in our downtown community. So again, thank you for your investment in destination events and sports, and we look forward to continuing to bring the best to San Jose.
Thank you. Thank you, John, and Laura, and Connie for your leadership. And each of your comments really underscore what we are describing as a virtuous cycle of success, a vital cycle of success, in which when you make investments in these ADD industries, it in turn generates content and products, vibrancy and quality, and quality of place, which in turn drive tourism and economic impact, as well as fiscal revenues. And then that becomes a virtuous cycle. Now we're going to speak about the current funding models for these industries, and I'm going to turn it over to our Budget Director, Jim Shannon. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Good morning, all. Yeah, spend a little bit of time talking about the city's current funding sources for ADD. One of the major ones is the revenue from the transient occupancy tax, or RTOT tax. By municipal ordinance, for, of that ten, ten percent, four, four percent, or forty percent of the revenues goes to the general fund for, that goes into the, the pot of all the general fund resources to fund city, city services. And six percent, or sixty percent of the revenues then is allocated, about half of that is for the convention center operations, which is managed by Team, Team San Jose. And then the remaining half is split between funding the convention and visitors bureau, also operated by Team San Jose, and then providing funding for cultural grants in the Office of Fine Arts, which is our OCA overseen by Carrie. Another tax provided on hotel rooms is our convention center facilities district tax, our CCFFD special tax. So this is a tax that was created about, so fifteen years or so ago, a district that was formed to fund the expansion of the convention center. And it, so with the revenues that are collected from that additional four, four percent on room rates goes to pay that debt service for that expansion, as well as, as excess resources are available to fund additional capital work, construction, reconstruction, and upgrade of the convention center. The really good news was even when we had the big downturn during the pandemic, our finance department was able to move very quickly. So as soon as those CCFD bonds were available to be refunded, they did so, and we got a much lower rate. And so now we've got a pretty healthy fund, fund balance in that fund again so we can continue the work on doing some strategic capital investments at the convention center. So that's good news there. Also not listed on this slide, but we do have another small funding source for our Hotel Business Improvement District. It's a, our H-Bid is a four percent self-assessment fee on all occupied room nights for hotels with eighty or more rooms located within the city limits of San Jose. The H-Bid provides some revenues for marketing efforts and event opportunities as provided in the H-Bid budget that gets approved by council every year. That's around two and a half to three million dollars on an annual basis. Looking at some of the history of the TOT revenue itself. So this is the combined ten, ten percent amount, and this kind of just kind of looks back in time. And you can see a pretty awesome rise of revenues. When we had the depths of the, the Great Recession, that was down, you know, close to seventeen million, and just had sort of a rocketing rise over a ten-year period at that pre-pandemic peak of, of fifty million. So that's one of the largest revenue growths year over year in that the city revenues had. And then, of course, and luckily during that time, we were pretty strategic and set aside a lot of reserves in the various funding sources to help us bridge sort of a normal recession. We didn't have a normal recession. Everything sort of fell off a cliff. And so we had to burn down all of those reserves and use some supplemental funds. And we had that nadir down there in 2021 for the full pandemic year, started to come back very strongly. Unfortunately, I think what we're seeing is that we're not going to get back to the pre-pandemic levels any, anytime soon. And at least for the foreseeable future, we're seeing sort of a new, a newer normal at a lower rate than where we had been previously. And so that's one of the reasons why we're here today. This chart here provides, again, to me, so there's a lot of numbers on the slide, but it's, it's spending a little bit of time with this is useful to see, you know, what we've been spending for the different major funding sources. And so the general fund does provide a portion of the funds that are available for ADD, and I have them grouped there. So that first line is cultural grants, and that's really supplemental funding. For the twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three years, that four million dollars was money transferred from the American Rescue Plan Fund into the general fund to support cultural, cultural grants. The million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four is sort of pure general fund money that was allocated by council as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, budget process. The second line, cultural facilities operations and maintenance, are operating agreements we have with our various operators that operate some of the city cultural facilities that are not operated by Team San Jose. So these would be things like the Children's Discovery Museum, History, San Jose, the, the tech. So those, those we have operating agreements, and we, we provide resources to operate those, those facilities. Then the third line item there are the capital improvements needed for those facilities. So those are city-owned buildings, and so we have to do investments in those city-owned, city-owned buildings. And you'll see the amount in twenty-three, twenty-four. So of that eighteen point seven nine million, some of that was rebudgeted funds from prior years, not spent, but it does include a new infusion of twelve million dollars of general fund resources in twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four. We just had a lot of things we needed to take care of. I think one of them was seven point seven million or so, I think, for a new chiller at the Center for the Performing Arts. So some big investments that we had to do, and big investments that are still needed that are out there. And then we move down to the TO, the TOT fund, and these are the different pie slices that I was talking through earlier. So we've got our allocation for cultural, cultural grants. We have formally established what we call a cultural grants reserve in the past. We had, had some reserve funding within the cultural grants allocation within the, the TOT fund, but it was kind of mixed in together. And so we wanted to pull that out separately to show sort of what we're deliberately not allocating now that we could then allocate in the future if revenues go, go down. So we're sort of pulling that out. Then we have the line for the Cultural Grants Administration, which is primarily staffing in the Office of Cultural Affairs. The allocation for the CVB is, is shown on the, almost the bottom line. And then the, the bottom line there for convention and cultural facilities, operations and capital, that's sort of a mix of expenditures that is transferred in from the TOT fund and then spent in Fund 536, our convention, oh my God, I forgot the name of, our Convention and Cultural Affairs Fund, I think is what it's called. And so those, these are the sort of combination of major funding sources that on a year-over-year basis provide funding for arts destination marketing and destination events. And this is trying to show, you know, on a pictorial format, the, the different pieces. So again, we've got the, the, the TOT that's allocated to the Office of Cultural Affairs. We've got the TOT slice that's allocated to the CVB. We've got our general fund citywide contributions, which funds the operations of our culture facilities, which also funds some of that capital work. We do have some other accessory expenditures, like our contract with San Jose Sports Authority, and then one-time funds for grants and special initiatives that varies on a year-to-year basis. What we'll talk about a little bit later is we also have a one percent set aside in our city's capital program for, for when we're expanding our capital facilities. We have a one percent set aside to create public, public art. And then there's the CCFFD fund that I mentioned earlier that funds upgrades specific to the convention center itself. And so now I will pass this back to Carrie.
Thank you, Jim. What's that? Oh, thank you. So why are more resources needed? Essentially, we have some declining TOT revenues, and we do see a need for diversification for more stability for these sectors. And if we did make additional investments, we could see additional activations, support programming, and also address that deferred maintenance and that backlog for our city-owned cultural and convention facilities. You'll see in a few minutes that we have a backlog of over ninety million dollars. And that each of those facilities are aging, and we want to ensure that they remain regional destinations. And furthermore, additional investments will help promote high-quality design and public art, and then also garner national and international events, all of which will drive more tourism and that we can maximize that these growth industries, and also save capital infrastructure costs over time. So now it is my pleasure to turn it over to David Platner Saunders and Martin Cohen of the Cultural Planning Group, who will present their findings. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to ask you now to turn your attention to revenue sources, where we can look to for additional funds for arts destination marketing and destination events. We cast a wide net, a dozen in total, and we considered a number of very familiar sources of arts funding, as well as some unusual ones. We were not asked to make recommendations for revenue sources, but we were asked to assess their general suitability. You know, how well do they get us where we want to go? So for each, we looked at a combination of revenue potential, what authority is needed to enact, how complex it is, and how long it would take. So we're using these four checkmarks to place the revenue sources into general categories in terms of what to examine further. And these checks marks are a combination of both consultant and staff opinion. Here's a preview of our ratings for the twelve. We're going to walk through each revenue source now, so fill up your coffee cups, and, and, and we'll talk through each one, looking at the specifics. But we will return to this slide at the end to recap where we are. Our first revenue source is the current public art requirement. Jim just referred to this a couple of slides ago. It's a one percent for art requirement on certain city capital improvement projects. You're familiar with this. This graph illustrates the need. It shows money coming into the public art program, which are projected public art revenues from the city's eligible CIP. You'll see revenues are dropping as bond-funded CIP projects are completed, but the program costs for staff, collection, maintenance, admin, and so forth remain. This is the public art budget need or gap Carrie talked about a few slides ago. So just to be accurate, please note that the seven point three million on the left-hand side of the graph is a multi-year accumulation of capital funds, which will be spent down over several years. So the steep drop is a bit visually misleading, but the overall point remains about the gap between income and expenses for the public art program. One revenue option is to increase the current one percent for art to two percent. San Jose has had a two percent requirement in the past. Excuse me. A two percent requirement is in line with some, but not all comparable, public art programs. San Francisco, San Diego, and Ventura, just to name a few. Doing this would generate about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the next four years, which is relatively small in relation to the need. One more. There we go. So overall, we rate this as a yellow. On the plus side, it can be readily enacted by council and would enhance the public art collection and its availability to the community. But it places a greater demand on scarce capital funds. It's not new money, and it does not diversify revenues. So it also has low revenue potential. Our second revenue source is an art requirement for private real estate development. This is not a current obligation for real estate developers in San Jose. It would require council adoption of a new fee. But there is some precedent for this in San Jose. When California and San Jose had redevelopment agencies, public art was a common negotiation point with developers. In fact, the public art piece on this slide, which is called Show Your Stripes, is an example of this type of developer agreement and project. Art requirements for private real estate development, you know, percent for art, are common throughout California and the nation. It's also been talked about and studied for years in San Jose. Adding art to development projects creates a new onsite asset, and it can increase real estate values both for the property and for the surrounding area. It also simply adds more arts to the environment, which is in itself a valuable community benefit. Private art ordinances can also be configured to allow developers to satisfy the requirement by providing an art space, an art gallery, a performance venue, or home base for an arts organization. So what do other cities do? One to two percent is a typical requirement. In San Jose, this has significant revenue potential through 2032. Most developers would choose to create onsite artworks as part of their development, but private art ordinances usually have an in-lu option so they can also generate funds for other purposes, like collection, maintenance, and administration. There's some concern, of course, that creating a private art requirement would be a disincentive for desirable development in the current environment. Developer fees are already significant, ranging from six to ten percent of total costs. There was a recent council study session on the current environment for private development that explored these circumstances, apart from the idea of an art requirement. But suffice it to say that there are ways to buffer these concerns by tailoring the ordinance. And it goes without saying that developers would need to be involved in any further assessment of this potential revenue source. So here's our rating, another yellow check. A private art requirement can be enacted by council action. More public art is better. It's better for the community and the city, and there is significant and diversified revenue potential. On the con side, adding a new financial requirement could be a disincentive to development, and these revenues would be restricted from some of the important needs we are trying to meet. Our third revenue source is an admissions fee, which is simply an add-on to the price of a ticket. Admissions fees are relatively common in other cities, and they're often used to help fund the arts. They can generate substantial amounts of annually renewable revenues. San Jose, San Jose does not yet have aggregate figures for paid admissions across the city, but the six city-owned venues alone have total annual attendance of seven hundred and thou, seven hundred thousand, so the revenue potential looks high. These fees are commonly applied to both public and private venues and events, and there's a strong nexus between the fee and its use in supporting the arts. And in fact, San Jose has done this in the past for a few specific types of events. One of the risks of admissions fees is harming smaller venues and nonprofit producers, so these ordinances need to be carefully tailored. Also, the, the city's current agreement with the Sharks prohibits admissions fees, though this can be a subject for renegotiation when the agreement renews. Here's a table of how different cities tailor their admissions fees to maximize revenues and minimize disincentives. So most fees are in the five percent range, and almost all exempt some combination of nonprofits and small venues. And you can see on the column on the left, cities are collecting revenues in the multimillion-dollar range each year. So we like this. For these reasons, we give it a green check. We think it has a strong mix of revenue potential and lower complexity. Our fourth revenue is, the revenue source is parking fees. As you know, the city owns and operates multiple parking lots, parking structures, and meters. Parking charges go into a fund administered by the city. Revenues to the parking fund have dropped in recent years and are not projected to increase. This partly reflects post-pandemic changes in downtown, which of course also underlie the reason for this study session today. Other cities do charge parking fees, but in San Jose, this would serve as a disincentive for the downtown revitalization we are trying to support. So for these reasons, and because of relatively low revenue potential, we rated parking fees as orange. Our fifth revenue source is rental car fees and scooter rental fees. You know, from your own experience, rental, rental car fees are already very high. They're about forty percent on top of the price of the, of the rental. We were unable to get rental car financial figures to gauge revenue potential for a new fee. Similarly, with scooter rentals, the city already imposes a licensing fee on scooter operators, and we were similarly unable to get financial information. But the revenue potential for both appears low. So for these reasons, we rated these fees as a red checkmark based on the high existing fees and low revenue potential. Our sixth revenue source is, here we go, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts, EIFDs. It's a mouthful, and it's also a bit complex. EIFDs came about in part to replace redevelopment agencies after they were eliminated by the state in 2011. But for our purposes, let's point out that they're intended for capital projects. They're paid for by incremental growth in taxes or fees in a defined geographic district, like in the redevelopment days. But you can't use the money for maintenance, operations, or programs, capital only. They often involve one or more local governments and creation of a separate financing authority. And if capital projects are financed with bonds, voter approval is required. EIFDs are complex, and they require significant planning and development, so they're a long-term initiative. Presumably, San Jose would use an EIFD to meet the capital needs of cultural facilities and the convention center, and probably combined with other capital needs. and the convention center, and probably combined with other capital needs. We rate EIFDs as orange simply because they are the most complex and lengthy undertaking, probably involving more than the arts and perhaps more than the city of San Jose also voter approval. However, they offer significant revenue potential for capital needs, including both arts and potentially broader downtown capital needs, and it would certainly be new money, so maybe a yellow is a long-term option. And now I'm going to pass the microphone to my good friend and partner, Martin Cohen.
Thank you, David. Good morning, everyone. So I'll get seven through 12 in the second half here. So the seventh option to consider for exploration is an approach in many communities of a dedicated revenue source to support arts, culture, and creative economy. As I said, it's been adopted in several jurisdictions nationally. These initiatives have been driven through the private sector, but have been proven to be popular where they exist, and they've often been adopted through a ballot measure by majorities that exceed 75%. The distinction here to consider, as we discuss this or look at this, is that this option is not driven by the city, it is not council-driven, or within the municipal framework. It is an initiative, or it is initiated by residents, by voters in the city. That said, there are pros that are worth considering in the community to, that may be compelling. These initiatives in many places are built on cross-sector efforts. It is common for a range of quality-of-life functions in a community to collaborate, to benefit parks, libraries, and other quality-of-life needs and services. Additionally, in nearly all instances that CPG, our firm, cultural planning group, has studied over a number of years of these kinds of initiatives and programs, and revisited many for this project, we find these measures are, once they are adopted, are then sustained through reauthorization, once they sunset. Some have been reinitiated for as long as 15 years. As mentioned when introducing this option, the challenge is the need for private leadership. Indeed, there can be no city involvement. The legal framework is clear on how the city can participate or provide information. No government resources can be involved, and there cannot be city advocacy. But there are some national examples to look at here, just for reference, that you might want to think about. The most recently adopted one was in King County, Washington, the Seattle area, this past December. This is actually part of a statewide initiative to allow local jurisdictions to make the choice to adopt it. It was required in the original law to be voter-driven and is now council-manic. So the King County Council actually adopted this in December. They'll begin collecting sales tax augmentation on March 15th, and in 2024 alone, it's anticipated the revenues to support arts and culture will exceed $70 million for the county, and within two years, exceeding $102 million. On a total of, opposite end of that scale, on a smaller scale, though not on this list, is Boulder, Colorado, where voters recently approved repurposing an existing sales tax for two different purposes, and the 50% that will support arts and culture is estimated to generate about $3.5 million a year, beginning in 2025. So again, just two different-sized communities, vastly different size, but where these initiatives exist. So to summarize, you know, this leading to the top point here, these initiatives are game changers in communities, regardless of scale. The consensus among us was to rate a yellow checkmark because of the investment and the work of required citizens, of private citizens, and again, that this is not a city initiative. But it's included here today because of the value to consider it as an option, even though it's not through council option, so perhaps it's to have, let the community know that these options are out there for them. Our eighth is, is looking in a little bit different direction. Earlier in the presentation, there was discussion on deferred maintenance and capital investment needs for the city-owned cultural and events facilities. So one option is to examine a city-led bond initiative when considering long-term strategies for the facilities, whether for upgrades, redevelopment, or potentially for new construction. Here, you see a list of the city-owned convention and cultural facilities. Taken as a whole, it is an extraordinary list of venues that are essential to the life and vibrancy of San Jose. These facilities are also essential in considering any revenue-driven investment in destination marketing or destination events. They are, if you will, the backbone that is necessary in hosting any efforts in developing additional destination events and supporting arts, culture, and creative activities in the community. I think Bryce, or I'm sorry, Bryce, I think, Jimmy, you were going to comment on this, I think, from our conversation?
Well, I could come, I am happy to comment on this because I know that one of the things that we think about quite a bit is the deferter structure backlog that we have within the cultural arts facilities and all of our other facilities here. So, you know, a general obligation bond is, is, will be part of our strategy at some point, because the level of the backlog that we have throughout the organization is pretty substantial, and our last bond initiative was Measure T in 2018. And so, you know, in the coming years, certainly the city will need to consider another general obligation bond effort to get at our infrastructure, and certainly the cultural facility should be part of that conversation.
Thank you, Jim. So we think it's important to note that bonds are not operating in project funds. You know, they are a financing mechanism for long-term capital needs. They're looking out quite in the future, both for the arts and other capital assets that are required for destination events. Bonds would need a revenue source to finance them, as he talked about, and there is the potential to use existing capital assets as collateral. Regardless, bond initiatives are for very long-term thinking. Here, because of that, we have rated this option as yellow, recognizing both the potential and the opportunity, and the importance of their use as an element in a long-term capital facility strategy. So now we're going to, the next three, nine, 10, and 11, actually, are all variations, if you will, on a theme. We're looking at different approaches to the TOT, the transient occupancy tax funds. It should be noted, as we begin discussing these next three options, that in our benchmarking research for this study, TOT funds are probably the most common source of arts funds in California, and actually, in many places across the country, in many cities, after the general fund allocations. We'll look more closely at that in a little bit. But the first of the three approaches around TOT to consider is just an increase in the rate of levied TOT funds. Here, we quickly revisit this graph seen earlier in the presentation, showing the history of collections. We see both the growth over an extended period of time, in fact, as pointed out, quite significant climb, as well as we see the economic challenges in recovery in both 2008 and with the pandemic in 2020 and beyond. We can safely say that we have not fully rebounded from the impact of the pandemic as we see the numbers here, though that it is encouraging to see where the growth is going. We did want to mention that the drop in TOT revenues in both economic downturns was backfilled by a degree, by a degree with council using reallocations of general funds. In 2021, this was augmented as well by federal relief funds. This graph here, you know, even though we know the TOT is growing again, shows that it's not sufficient to meet the needs identified in this study for the OCA, the Office of Cultural Affairs Operations Program and Grants Program. This projection over, through 28, is showing modest growth for OCA's share of TOT. However, we do want to say this was based on the February 23, 2023 forecast by Tourism Economics. We anticipate the ability to update this forecast in just the next few weeks, so this graph is likely to benefit from some updated projections. We will, but we share this today to show the challenge of limited resources for investing in the standing programs of OCA, as well as consideration of investments in destination events and destination marketing. The 2023 tourism economics models that we were just referring to indicate that a 1.5% to 1% increase in the TOT rate, going to the point of this number nine option, would yield between $2.1 and $4.2 million in investments for ADD and for the OCA. So again, as, as this option would be increasing, again, 1.5% or 1%, that's the potential here. We note that increasing the TOT rate is rated orange here because of the challenge that it would require a 2/3 majority in a ballot measure, if the city initiated it, and it would require a clear consensus and willingness, particularly from the hospitality industry. So then we all on to the second view of TOT, which is option 10, and here we're considering a reallocation of TOT revenues from the 40% of the total, or 4% of the 10% carve-out, that's mandated to go towards the city's general fund. And a reallocation, again, you know, here we refer to the TOT forecast from February 2023, indicating the anticipated general run, general fund share between 25 and 28, that it is expected to grow from 20, or 17, to $25 million. When the new study comes out in the next couple of weeks, we suspect this number will be higher. What we want to look at here is that the primary challenge of this option is that a reallocation would further, based on current projections, before we have the updated numbers, would further exacerbate the projected general fund revenue shortfall. This option is rated with a red checkmark, however, because of the impact on those general fund shortfalls. It's notable that is mentioned in the number nine, as we talked about in the option earlier. The general run fund resources have been reallocated from time to time to backstop shortfalls and TOT revenues for the OCA budget, which is another way to consider that they're always, always the option through the budgeting process. 11th option here is the final of the TOT approaches, which is to examine the updated forecast revenues when ready and determine a baseline point where any revenues generated above that baseline would then be available or solely committed for ADD, what we're talking about today. This allows for growth in two different ways. One is a contribution to raise to the general fund, but be able to say we're capping that raise to the general fund, and allowing ADD to benefit from any exponential growth or additional growth above that. And here we see a bit of a graphic way to look at that, to see, you know, let's determine the baseline, what is, and determine, quote-unquote, the net new, with that a net new essentially becoming a, a commitment to go beyond. So we have a stopping point for general fund, and then everything is the growth beyond that becomes seed funding for return on investment. Here, the consensus rating is for orange, again, given the anticipated demand for general funds in the next several fiscal years, but we believe this may be worthy of additional And our final option to look at here, number 12, is to prioritize ongoing or one-time general funds allocations for strategic investments. You know, I would almost say this is the old adage, let's spend money to make money. Throughout this presentation, we have discussed that ADD is a strategic investment. The models for arts, destination marketing, and destination events all indicate the potential return on investment, but it requires risk capital to be identified to make that happen. Option 12 suggests that, that that risk capital, that strategic investment, be considered from the general fund. The distinction here, it is, in essence, seed money and not operating funds for programming. For that reason, we have a green checkmark here. It's based on the value of pilot investments that can be measured, and perhaps is an opportunity to build a case for further investments. This is an option that is within normal budgeting processes of the city. If it rises to a level of priority for council and is an expression of what we value, then it is built into the budget for one or more years, as any decision is made on an annual So that's through the 12 options, and while we've been through the 12, we'd like to share just a little bit of perspective from our benchmarking research and a few conclusions from comparable cities. First off is, of the cities we examined in our comparable study, San Jose has the lowest of the TOT rate, so that may indicate an opportunity, though it is not, it is noted that the CCFD that was talked about earlier does raise that level to market average. Other cities across California have a range of approaches, utilizing one or more of these options that we have discussed today. So we do also want to reiterate that as we look at, going back across these 12 options, that a multi-pronged approach is, is worthy of consideration here. It is notable that all the other cities we examined do have private art requirements and do have admission fee requirements, so these are not unprecedented in California. This chart here, which is in your presentation, summarizes the comparison of San Jose with six other California cities, so that you can look specifically in the different kinds of approaches, most of which we have discussed today. So now we return back to the summary checklist. And as we reach this point, we'd like to reiterate, as I mentioned a second ago, that none of these options should be considered as a sole approach. It is desirable to review this review that we're doing today in its totality and the desirability of considering multiple revenue sources, not just one, in a phased approach that includes some that are more complex and others that are longer to achieve and are very long-term. While this list is, in a sense, a snapshot, it does not, it does suggest that there's significant value in that multi-pronged approach, both in mitigating risk, as well as the potential for significant return on investments. So Kerry, I think you're going to finish up here?
First, thank you very much, David and Martin. No problem. Really appreciate your expertise and experience in helping us think these issues through. The next steps that we want to bring forward for consideration is, depending on the conversation and where the affinity for certain sources might be explored, there may be the need for additional consultant dollars to help us think through the mechanisms for how to implement and the different components of strategy in the overtime that David and Martin were both speaking to. And it may be council consideration of strategic investments in '24, '25 that would allow pilot activities that would be targeted, strategic, and measurable, to see what can return, particularly from a financial and economic point of view. In closing, as you've heard, arts, culture, and destination events are our downtown engine. As downtown grows more oriented toward arts, entertainment, and an expanding residential base, it's reasonable to consider the potential of adding and diversifying revenue streams to create a means to amplify investments or generating R&amp;D, if you will. Downtown and the arts are our growth industry. Team San Jose and the city have demonstrated that there is ways to market and add content that will bring many values back to the city. Further strategic investments in content development and marketing present a potential, done with appropriate performance metrics, that can lead to hotel occupancy and increased sales tax from flights, rooms, foods, transportation, and more. Kerry spoke of the vital cycle earlier in the presentation. It's success that can come from investments in the arts, creating additional content, vibrancy, and quality of place, driving visitation from local and afar, and excitement, and with it, positive economic and fiscal impact. With that, staff rests. We conclude. Thank you for your patience in listening to the full enumeration of potential revenue sources, and we're available as a team for questions.
Great. Thank you, Nancy and, and team, everyone who contributed to the presentation. I think it was a, I like the way of a performing arts crowd here. We're applauding for the, the presentation. It was, it was well-delivered. You can, you could take a bow, Nancy. I, you know, I think, I think you all gave a very helpful and detailed overview of the impact of arts and culture, some of the, the challenges we face. I think the background on revenues is really useful to the council, particularly as we head into our budget process. And then the outline of where we might increase resources, potential revenue streams is really useful to see. Something I'd like to see more of in future conversations is more detail around specifically where we think investments can have incremental impact and really, really helping us better visualize visualize concretely. If we had another, whatever, half a million, million, five million, what would we do and why do we believe it would be high ROI? Just help us better visualize from both a programming standpoint, the types of things we would want to try to do, the opportunities more concretely, and then, and then from the promotion and marketing side, where I personally have a hypothesis that we are undercommunicating particularly to a regional audience around what's happening here in San Jose. And, you know, we have a downtown, the Silicon Valley's downtown, and yet we have so many residents who decide to go travel to other parts of the region for their entertainment, for a fun evening out or a weekend trip. And so I think getting more concretely into specifically the kinds of investments, programming, events, that would be incrementally the next marginal improvement that would deliver ROI, and then how we're going to do a better job of telling that story and marketing it, though I think we are, I think, as Team San Jose pointed out, doing some impressive destination marketing. And I think we should dive deeper into that for our benefit. But overall, I think it was a really useful presentation. I may have more questions and comments, but I'm eager to hear from colleagues. The way this will work is we're just, after 10 o'clock, we've allotted up to 11:30 if needed. We're going to have dialogue, questions, and comments from the council, and then we'll open it up and we'll, we'll reserve at least, I'd say, the last 30 minutes by 11 o'clock. If we haven't already, we'll go to public comment so we can hear from folks who want to add their voices. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Torres.
Sorry, I was prepping.
Do you want me to come back to you?
No, no, we're not going to do public comment, or is that going to happen after?
That's at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we will, we will wrap up our discussion by 11, so we can hear from the public.
Okay. No, thank you. I was just gathering my, my notes. Thank you so much for, thank you, Mayor. Just gathering my notes here, so. Thank you to our city staff for, for this presentation. Thank you for our advocates as well, for, for being here and pushing us to do, to do this study session. And of course, most importantly, thank you so much to my colleagues for, for voting on, on the memo that I, that I submitted last year. So here we are. So writing memos does work, so, but this is, of course, important work. And, and before, before I had, I move on to questions that pertain to a little bit more in this presentation, I know because a lot of my colleagues, right, we, we represent various districts, but we all represent the city of San Jose, and I just don't want any of my colleagues to think that, that, that arts and culture is just downtown San Jose. It's not. We all know it's not, right? We have beautiful murals in East San Jose, right? We have beautiful murals, and we have amazing cultural centers in, in the west side of town, right? In, in one of the slides, I think it's, on, on our end, it's slide 17, where we are talking about funding of the arts, where it's a, where it says grants. So 5,044. That's obviously to organizations citywide, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then the, the reserves, what does that, what does that exactly mean?
Would you like me to do that, Jim?
Please.
Okay. So each year when we set up our budget, it is based on projected TOT revenues. So that's what our independent consultants estimate. However, that is subject to change. So we do set aside a 10% contingency so that in the case that collections don't meet projections, we do not have to not follow through on all the payments for the grants. So we utilize, we tap into those reserves for that purpose.
Okay. Great. And then I'm wondering, offline, if maybe we can get a list of, of arts organizations that, that definitely get this, this funding? I think it's, it's, it's good for myself and my colleagues to see which arts organizations apply for these grants, right? I know that many of them are small, many of them, many of them serve our community, but it's, it's just good as we are going to make very important decisions in the next few months regarding our budget on why, why it's important to continue to, to increase funding for, for the arts, so.
Yes, thank you. And we give out over 100 grants to very diverse multicultural organizations that are interdisciplinary. And each year, we bring those grants as part of an MBA to the council and the mayor for their, for your approval. And so you will see the recommendations and vote on those as part of this budget process.
Great.
And if I can just add, that also is an appendix to the adopted operating budget. So if you go on the Budget Office's website, go to the 2024 Adopt a Budget, there is an appendices there that out, itemizes all of the different grants.
Okay, great. That's great. The, the, another question that I had is slide 15. The special tax that brings in that, where we have $15 million, the balance of $15 million from, from that tax, who, who operates or who collects that tax?
The, the city collects that tax.
And, and we don't distribute that tax? That stays in a little rainy day fund or in a pot?
It is, so that tax is collected and remitted to the, to the city. The first call on that tax is to pay debt service on the bonds that were used to finance the expansion back in the early 10s. And then any balance that's left over after filling up the required reserves based on the bond covenants, then we are, is available for additional capital work. And prior to the pandemic, we had been using the CCFD fund for some capital work at the convention center. We had to really put that on hold because revenues dropped, and we weren't able to really access those funds again until we recently did the refunding of those bonds. And now that we have a balance there, we can kind of start doing some capital investments again, but those are restricted only to the convention center.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then for establishing, I'm just going to call it the Entertainment District, I'm not going to say the, the weird acronym that we have here. So what steps are needed to, to establish a Entertainment District, and what are the potential challenges and barriers of its implementation?
Councilmember, I think, I just want to clarify, Nancy Klein. I believe we're both talking about the enhanced infrastructure financing district.
I should have said it, E-I-F-D, yeah. I didn't want to say that, but yeah, Entertainment District, in my eyes, I should say it.
Thank you very much. The description that David and Martin provided of, of a complicated tax increment financing structure that was similar to what redevelopment previously used is being thought through from staff and our transit partners. It, it's very much anticipated that our joint efforts would come to you and those other agencies, because to fully implement the Deirdon Station, those funds to create the amenities and infrastructure will absolutely be needed. What the opportunity we're raising here is to include opportunities for funding with the arts amenities and double-checking in the law to the extent that we can support programming. So it's a multi-year effort, and it would be wonderful if other entities could participate, perhaps the county, because it was shared benefits, and that would result in the maximal opportunity to create and enhance Deirdon, which into the future will return more, not only for the city, but the county and the state.
Great. Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, we're, I think we're all hoping, we're all hoping for a part to come to San Jose and that one day we have a, a major transportation hub in Deirdon that hopefully includes an Entertainment District. So thank you for that. The, the other ones are going to be regarding TOT, because I know that's, 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 you know, very important discussion here at our city level. Can you provide more insight into the process of establishing a baseline for TOT revenues and redirecting any net new revenue above the baseline for strategic investments?
I think I can handle that one. So yeah, so we had done that in the, in the past. So how that would, would work is that, you know, we have our current projections, whatever the current projections for, for TOT is, a portion of that goes into the general fund. That's part of our base budget, that's part of our five-year forecast that we'll release at the end of February. So to the extent that there are revenues redirected on an ongoing basis from the general fund broadly into specific uses, we have to sort of pull that out of, of our general fund base, base budget. And so if a baseline was set higher than where the revenues are currently projected to be, that theoretically wouldn't have any impact on the five-year forecast that would get released, but, and so all those revenues could go to a specific thing. So for example, a number of years ago, that was done, and the additional revenues in general fund were set aside for capital investments at the cultural facilities. That was in place for several years until we had a pretty significant shortfall and council undid that, that direction, had the balance all go to, to the general fund on an ongoing basis. So if that baseline was reestablished at, at some level, and it was set high enough, it wouldn't have an immediate impact on the general fund, but the general fund would obviously be limited to any future growth above and beyond that baseline, because all of that benefit would then go toward those specific uses for arts, destination marketing, and destination events.
Great. And then would this approach, would this approach impact the city's financial flexibility and ability to address other priorities?
It would, yeah. It certainly would, depending on, again, where that baseline was, was set. And the city's priorities are, and the challenges that we face vary year, year to year, and can be significant. And so any dedicated funding source away from the general fund sort of limits council's hands to address, you know, difficult issues as they come up in the future.
Okay, great. And then, given the comparative analysis with other California cities that we saw, why does San Jose lag behind, behind in terms of revenue sources and support for the arts despite our status as a major cultural hub?
Well, thank you for the question. I respectfully kind of respond back to the council, you know, and the mayor for, you know, it is, our, our budgets and our revenue sources are ones that, we're leaders, but we have not really diversified them even further. So I think that there's just, that's really one of the purposes of today's session.
And, and may I add that, as Connie Martinez mentioned, other communities have had a philanthropic partner more than we have had. And we have an opportunity, again, as Connie discussed, to think through that and bridge beyond it, but it's going to take work from all of us.
Great, great. And then I actually had more questions, but I see the, my thing clicking here. We're going to have a second round?
We can come back around to you.
Okay.
I think we'll have time. We'll see how many colleagues want to chime in.
Okay.
Let me come back to you.
Then I'll, I'll, I'll yield my time, and then I'll go for a round two.
Not sure you're yielding anything at this point, but we appreciate the sentiment. It's all right.
Hey, I usually don't talk a lot, okay? So this is important.
Appreciate your thoughtful questions.
I'll wait for my second round. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the answers.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, we're going to come over to Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, all important information. And I appreciate, you know, Councilmember Foley and I were sort of agreeing with your comment, Councilmember Torres, that downtown, obviously it's in your district, totally respect that, but it's, everyone's downtown, and I appreciate you lifting that up, because I think we all care about it. So I appreciated you saying that. I have a few just thoughts and jumbled sort of things I wanted to say. The first thing is, what I'd be curious to know, and, and I, I understand, I imagine there may be a different differing of opinion as it relates to this question, but if I had to ask staff, like, if you had money today, unlimited, where would you put it?
If I had, you know, money today, I would invest it in a destination marketing campaign that, you know, we could track, and it could be very measurable, and that we could come back to the council and report out on the results of that. But I think that would in turn generate economic impact and more revenues, TOT revenues for the arts. And then furthermore, with the, you know, still seeing that our TOT revenues have not recovered, my interest would be to ensure that we could stabilize our grant funding, which in turn, you know, results in an economic and fiscal impact in our community and supports jobs.
And I would just want to add that adding content in close coordination with the arts community will bring more people down, add our relevance, and as John Poach said, strategically placed, so it's bringing people here when we're not already.
And when you say content, Nancy, you're referring to programming?
Programming of all different types, partnerships, art, music, and beyond.
Right, okay. And then, and then the marketing campaign, I appreciate that. I think someone said it earlier, that you need to spend money to make money. My, my kids would say it a little different. They go scared money, don't make money, right? You actually got to put it in there and not be scared to spend it, because that is what's going to derive that value and that revenue. And so to the point you made about the marketing campaign, is that the slide, I think it was slide number 12 from Laura, that Laura had up there? And so what I took away from that is the more we spend, the more benefit we derive, right? Is effectively what happens? Is that?
I want to, I, I've been sitting a lot with Jim Shannon. And, well, he may well add on, but I want to, I want to say that from all the work that Laura and Team San Jose has done, I think we can feel confident in saying we have a very good chance of getting back more than we put in. And how many things do you, as a council, get to invest in that have a chance to develop and bring in more than we put in? We want to be conservative with estimates of return. We want to demonstrate through pilot that set up really tangible metrics so that we can show you and learn and partner with the arts and culture and destination.
But are you suggesting we don't know that already? Because a pilot, to me, would say, let's go explore and see if it actually works. What I heard seems to me that we've actually proven it out, that you spend this, you get that. Is that?
We, Laura brought forward, and I think Team San Jose had an opportunity to share with you, that yes, indeed, there's an opportunity, and we know that, but what kind of returns and what else do we need to do, and how do we need to do, because the bridging, to the mayor's point of regional, so that we get more people from Almeden, from your district, from throughout North San Jose in the community? Those are things, there's a lot we don't know.
I understand. Okay. So, and, and to touch on that, it's just, sometimes I get frustrated with us, the city, right? It's us sometimes up here, sometimes, you know, it's just the way things work at the city. Things move slowly. And I understand that, that there's a reason for that. But I think, based on what I heard today, there's very clear things that seem to work if we decide to pull those levers, flip the switch. And so I'm, just my personal opinion is, I don't think we should delay. We should get going, to the extent it's financially feasible, it doesn't impact the budget in a negative way. I think we, we, if we recognize something works, I think we need to go forward in an expedited way instead of studying the heck out of it, hiring consultants where we pay a million dollars to go tell us what we already know, and, and so, no, no, but, no, I mean, just generally, we often talk about consultants and stuff like that, which are vitally important to what we do, right? We don't have all the expertise in-house. But, but anyway, you get my point. So I just wanted to express that. As it relates to private development involvement, I know there was talk of that, what I'm curious about is, what I've found, as an example, there was a development in District Two not too long ago, and it's affordable housing development, charities, housing project. And one of the things I asked them when they came forward is, can you leave some blank walls so we can put some murals up? And they agreed. It didn't take any extra resources, I don't think, and we got the murals up, it looks beautiful, you know, the, the, the community comments about them all the time. So what I'm wondering is, where would we embed some, and I don't know if we have anyone from PBC, but, or planning, but I imagine we can embed some of those design standards to get us more of this beautification in the existing buildings that are just going to be built naturally through some of the development process? I mean, do you have any thoughts on that? It seems like that's a very easy, natural way to embed some of this.
Thank you so much for the question, Councilmember. I'll start out. The notion, as David and Martin spoke to, of a percent for art program for private development, we believe can make sense. The question is timing. Right now, we can't add anything to make it harder on development, but to your point, we're having conversations now with the developers as they move forward to prime that pump and do art within their projects, and to think about that on a voluntary basis. I'll give you an example. West Bank includes in every project they do substantive, significant art. So making sure project they do substantive, significant art. So, making sure that happens in a big way here on their projects will help drive that conversation. And to your point, there are plenty of opportunities, whether on the walls, in the landscaping, built into the building, in a variety of ways. So, it's getting to developments early and having the conversation, and hopefully having receptive ears to the developers, which council can very much help with that conversation.
Yeah, I agree. And my description is not going down the road and adding an extra fee, but to the extent we have developments in our respective districts, you can say, you know, even if there's going to be a Costco built somewhere, we can say, hey, Costco, put up a mural or do something, right, special, as an example, right? I mean, so we each have that ability to have those conversations, some of the folks that are coming forward, to try to embed some of the beautification within the projects. But, the last thing I'll say, because I'm running out of time, is, and it seems like a very straightforward thing to do, but I know sometimes even when I think that, that we get into the mechanics of it internally, and it becomes a little bit more complicated. But, the paid admission, so effectively, I read that is like a surcharge of sorts, right? So, you go buy a ticket at SAP Center, at the Civic, whatever it may be. I mean, we can even call it like a love-for-the-art surcharge, three dollars a ticket more, right? If I'm buying a concert ticket for eighty bucks, seventy bucks, I don't think twice about the three-dollar fee. And so, I think I heard a number, 700,000 sort of, I don't know, people have come through the turnstiles, if you will, as it relates to some of these, is what I heard. If we added three dollars of that, that would be 2.1 million a year, just by that, doing that. And that seems like a very easy approach. And so, what I'm curious about is, and to Jim, if we did that, like tomorrow, if we said, any venue, you know, you have an event, you buy a ticket, you pay an extra three bucks, that goes to a particular fund that's going to go do X, Y, and Z, does that just go into the general fund?
It would be a, yeah, it would be a fee. So, it probably would. It would probably be a fee for the service. So, I think what the steps we'd have to do is make sure that the fee that's being charged is related to the cost that's being provided, you know, to the city. So, we'd have to do that work. That work is, you know, not that difficult to accomplish. But it would go to the general fund, like a lot of our other fees and charges do. So, we do some civic work that's funded in the general fund, that is then compensated by the fees charged by the users for that, for that work. So, we're kind of similar to that.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, I think that, to me, that seems like a no-brainer sort of approach to start going down this road, to get more funding, to do some of the work that we want to do. And then, the very, I have a few other questions, but the last thing I'll just say is, I asked staff, you know, what you would do if you had money. Is there anyone in the audience from any particular group or organization that wants to share what you would do if you had unlimited money, as it relates to?
Everybody would share.
And just before we open the floodgates, we will, we will have a half hour of public comment.
No, I understand, but I got 30 seconds. Anyone want to come up and just share what you, where you think the money should be spent? It's counting down, so you better run down. Please.
Music for all. Free music performances, on board in all districts, available for folks of all ages, with no restrictions.
Yeah, all right, wonderful. Well, perfect segue. I think some of my colleagues have additional questions, but thank you so much for the information and your passion for the arts. I share it with you, so thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Jimenez. Appreciate that. Councilmember Foley?
What a perfect segue to me. I am absolutely thrilled to have this conversation. Performing arts, visual arts, are huge economic impact, we've already heard, but we know that it brings so much more to the city of San Jose. For our children's groups, it brings our children experiences that they've never experienced before. It allows them the opportunity to perform in front of their parents, grandparents, and others. And I do host a free music concert every year called Music in the Valley in my district. This is the third year I'll be hosting it. And the whole idea is to showcase performing arts programs at our middle and high schools. So, I bring bands from the middle and high school. This year, I'm going to have a little performing arts group from theater come, singers. It's a wonderful opportunity. So, free concert, April 28th, just to put a plug out there. Also, it, I should note that my daughter works for a performing arts company. And so, performing arts and funding arts is hugely important to me. John, I appreciate you being here and how important sports are to the community, especially driving it. But there are kids who are performing artists or visual artists who aren't athletes, and both need to have a venue, both need to have an opportunity to present and experience their wealth of talent in that way. So, we need all, and it's really important that we have all. How we fund all is really a good question, and I have some concern, or some questions about it, actually. So, huge, I set that up by saying, I'm a huge advocate, and you've all heard that. Some of you know me and know that that is the case. But I have some questions about how we get there. Thank you for the presentation on the different proposals, and there were a couple that you greenlit. One is the admissions fee, which Councilmember Jimenez referenced. And that seems like something we could implement really quickly, but I'm concerned about a flat fee. And the reason I'm concerned is that a ticket that is $25, that has a flat fee of $30, three bucks, just to throw a number out there, is proportionally higher percentage than someone who's paying $80 for a ticket price for a concert. So, if kids are going, or parents are buying tickets to Children's Musical Theater, Starting Arts, any number, Mexican Heritage, any number of our performing arts programs, they're not paying a higher ticket price. So, I'd like to consider a percentage increase and not a flat fee. That way, it is a user's fee, so I'm not opposed to admission cost. I actually like that idea, because it's a use, it's a use tax, as opposed to a parcel tax, or a developer tax. So, it's not a disincentive to development coming in, but it could generate income for us. I'd just like us to consider a percentage and not a flat fee, because I think it could be an impediment to selling more tickets at the lower level. Not so much maybe at the higher level, but definitely at the lower level. I'm also aware, and I have some questions, our facilities need a lot of work. The capital improvement dollars that we need are huge. And some of the funding mechanisms you mentioned were specific to bricks, what I'll call bricks and mortar, as opposed to programs. Many people in the audience today are program-oriented, so they want to see funding. I'm assuming they're going to talk to us about funding for programs. But several of the proposals you came to us with really are bricks and mortar. Many of those had huge, weren't rated highly in implementation. So, when you talked, spoke about bonds, one of them was a bond that we could leverage our, the properties that we own to obtain bonds that way, which actually, it does end up costing the city through the payment of the bonds. But are you, was one of your proposals a bond on our parcel tax as a bond on property as well, or no?
Yeah, we had, one of them was a general obligation bond, which we, sort of similar to what Measure T is. So, there would be a tax on a parcel to fund the bonds. One of the, I know you're on time. One of the good things about a general obligation bond for facilities built to last a lifetime is that you have some intergenerational equity amongst the users of those facilities, in terms of how that tax is applied.
Yeah, and there's no question that we need capital improvement dollars, a lot of deferred maintenance in all of our buildings, unfortunately. It's something we kind of kick the can down the road a lot when we really shouldn't. We need to continually to refresh our buildings to actually make them more attractive to people who are going to be using them and coming into the space. So, I'm, how we get to the deferred maintenance piece and the capital improvement would be, is interesting to me. I share Councilmember Jimenez's thoughts about asking our developers to voluntarily put art in their space. When, we've had a couple of affordable housing projects in District Nine, too, and the conversation comes out around, how can we make the building more attractive? How can we make, how can we bring local artists to participate in an art piece? And in a couple of cases, they've designed some of the entryways to make the lobby with, have some art design that is attractive and educational as well, or murals. So, it's, I think we can do that on a voluntary basis without adding to the cost of development yet, because I'm concerned about adding to the cost of development at this point. One, the voter initiative seemed interesting. Can you, you listed several cities and how different cities approach them. One was Portland has an income tax. Can you tell me about that?
Yeah, actually, David, David's working in Portland now. He might be able to talk more specifically about.
Yes, council member. Portland has no sales tax. There's no sales tax in the state of Oregon. So, they have a city income tax, and they've added a $35 per person, or per household, income tax in 2011, I think?
Oh.
For arts education and the arts.
I have family who live up there, and no one mentioned that to me. That's why I was very curious about that. Thank you. The voter initiative, is that more of a parcel tax?
There are a variety of-
Which would be more program-related. Is that right?
Well, they're used-
But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're used in many different ways. It really depends on what, how the local sale, many of them are sales tax augmentations. You know, Cuyahoga County, which is Cleveland area, is a cigarette tax. In some cities, you see food and beverage taxes. But the most common is a sales tax. And they, they're used, oftentimes, they'll go into a general office of arts and culture.
Okay.
Councilmember, if I may add, you know, for years in California, since Prop 13, we have thought you need two-thirds voter approval for a dedicated revenue source. So, this was changed, as you all know, by recent cases coming out of San Francisco, and they've been confirmed by the appellate courts here in California, that where a dedicated tax is initiated through a voter initiative, it's initiated by the voters, it only needs to meet a 51% threshold. So, this, for the arts, is huge, and the state is just beginning to wake up to this opportunity, the state's arts community is just beginning to wake up to this opportunity, and it's one of the reasons that we rated it favorably in our study.
Thank you. So, you rated, and I see my time is coming to an end, and you rated two things green. One was prioritize the one-time general fund dollars. I'm actually concerned about that, because we do a lot of one-time fund allocations, and the impact that that has on our budget is concerning. The other is the ticket price and admissions price. I like that. I think that one is well worth investigating. But finally, you also mentioned that our TOT is below the market, if you will. So, I'd like to ask the Team San Jose, Laura, whether we have had any event planners say, your TOT is, if you raise your TOT, we're not coming. Has that ever been a discussion? Please, thank you.
We have. So, right now, when you saw the allocations of the TOT, if you want to put that slide back up, oh, I'm loud enough, you might not need that. We're at 14%, which, well, TOT plus the other tax put on transients who come in. So, we're at 14% right now.
Right.
So, is our competitive set? We're all about there.
Okay.
We, the issue, and I think this is probably worth saying here, is we have local producers and programmers, and it's, we're proud of our union contracts and that we're union houses, but it's not inexpensive to host something here. So, barriers to entry, we do hear a lot-
Okay.
-that that does cost.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I won't use my time, because I've exceeded my time, but thank you.
Thanks, council member. Tapping into the bank account there. Okay, so, we are at 10:40. Want to make sure we hear from everyone. I appreciate all the great engagement from colleagues. We still have a number of hands up, so I'm going to ask that we move to about five minutes per person, so we can hear from everyone. I'll do my best to guide us there. Councilmember Batra?
Good morning. Thank you for the extensive reporting here. I'll try to limit my question. First question I have is for our budget director. When we create these carve-outs, because I see 12 of them, they're all carve-outs, wanting permanently allocating this money through this revenue source to a particular essential service of the city, and I'm calling art and other activities to be a central service. Does it make our administration easy, harder, or no difference?
Well, I think to the extent that we take revenues in the general fund and carve them out for specific purposes, and it does certainly make the council's job harder in the long run, to respond to new needs that may come up. Yeah, and I, but I, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I would consider that the council is charged with the responsibility of delivering all these services to the city with whatever revenue we get. The more carve-outs we have, the more difficult, I believe, it becomes our job. I would like to see, this is an essential service, just like any other service, fire and police. They compete on a yearly basis for the amount of money they need, for the amount of money they require, instead of having the carve-outs, because that makes our life extremely difficult. I'm not against art, I'm not against the performing arts, but I'm not in favor of having carve-outs which make our rest of the life difficult. So, I want to ask a couple of questions directly related to. The item which was presented to me a few days ago, and has been flashed a few times, is showing that there is a direct relationship? Yes. Yeah, your favorite slide has been in my hands since you came and presented it to me. For the 2425, why isn't this the proposal of yours, which directly links to the additional revenue for the city, does not create a negative for the general fund? Why isn't this the overall recommendation from the community, which you represent in this case, be the only recommendation for 2425, rather than complicating our life in terms of creating carve-outs and making our city nickel-diming the people, which makes it for the visitors to be more difficult to be visiting our city, and the residents to be paying this bond and that bond and all that, or rather deal it through the general fund? Please tell me why.
Thank you for the question. From the perspective we come from at Team San Jose, this is our area of expertise. This is what we can do. We know when we link what we do with the call to action, that is our cultural reasons, and with creative done by artists, we know together, we're super impactful. I can't speak for, we work well with our friends in the budget, and they've believed in what we do, and they've funded it. They're balancing many things. We were asked to be here to give a recommendation on what we think would be best. We believe in what we can do. So, that's why we're here.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what I would like to see it from this large community, two things. One, what is it you really need, because you showed there's some amount of leftover work which has not been funded? That's an essential amount of money we need in 2425. We also have, from the proposals, that if you give us this much more money, right in 2425, we can bring you this much more. We can have this many more events. I think those are the two things I would like to see available to us, so that I can go and 100% support it. I'm not too keen- I'm not too keen or impressed with the idea of trying to create, these 12 proposals all say how we can increase revenue or increase allocation for one particular area of the services we have to render. So be the partner in it, demand what you need, and make us extra revenues, but instead of creating the carve-outs, which I will not be in favor of any of those. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councilmember, appreciate that. Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation. You know, one of the things I really appreciate is the ability to look at the different options that potentially we could, as a council, decide on. So for me, this was very, very valuable, so I really appreciate it. There are some things that I like, there are some things that I don't like, and there are some things that I think that we ought to really move forward with. You know, I want to say arts, culture, and sports are critically important. It's part of the fabric and creates the tapestry of who we are in this community. So, you know, I mean, when I think about where we've been and where we want to go, you know, the arts, culture, and sports brings us joy, it brings us happiness. We need more joy and happiness. So I want to say, just initially, as I look at it, I like the variety of the 12. In terms of the ones that I see for short term and long term, the admissions fee has already been mentioned, whether it's a percent or flat fee. I think that I would agree with my colleague Pam Foley, that, you know, we ought to make it so that if it's a small ticket, it's, they're not, you know, sort of like overpay, over, having so much more than they have to pay. And, and so that's one of the areas that I would like to consider. Obviously, voter initiative is something. I think that if we were to combine things that people really want to see more of, you know, the arts, parks, and library, that might be a potential. Obviously, we need someone in the private sector, and anyone listening out there in the private sector, we'd love to be partners, because I think that community wants that. I also think that while I'm sure that there are plans in terms of dealing with what is needed in each of the facilities, we need a more aggressive, clear plan to address deferred maintenance and capital improvement. I think we ought to have something laid out to say, this is where the money's coming from, this is what we're going to do, and address some of those, some of those needs ahead of time, because if you don't address them at a, in a timely moment, it's going to cost much more later on. So I really think that we ought to have something more comprehensive and lay it out to say, you know what, I know it's going to be painful, but we really, really need to fix this, and, and just get it done. I also feel that we need to make short-term investments in arts, culture, and sports. And I think this prioritizing for strategic investments, I don't know, I think it's sort of, I don't have an amount. I don't know what, what, how much money that is, but I do think that if we're able to say this year during the whole budget process, we would like to invest X number of dollars in the short term in these strategic investments initiatives, to be able to see what is the outcome later on. I think that we ought to just do it in the short term, and have a long-term vision of where we want to be, what do we want to do? And, you know, I'm delighted that each of us has different activation events. We ought to sort of figure out how to do more of that, because I do think that it brings people back. And again, you know, in terms of being able to deliver on this joy and happiness, I think it's critical, I really do. I mean, people are tired from the, you know, COVID times and all of that, and, and wouldn't it be nice if not only are we the capital of Silicon Valley, but the capital of joy and happiness? How about that? So, and with that, you know, less than five minutes, Mayor.
Well done. Look at you, you're good. That deserves a round of applause. Okay, great. We've got about a little, around 10 minutes, we don't have to be too strict about it, but we'll go to Councilor Dewan next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, and for the proposal. I agree with my colleagues, and I agree with Councilmember Torres, when we're talking about art, it's not just downtown. We should bring it to District 7 and many other districts, that's including musics and murals and outstanding, you know, displays of art. It has been too long that our city kind of, lack of art, something that speak loudly when a visitor comes to San Jose and says, wow, this is what I remember. To include sports events, this is what, what I did when I, you know, at San Jose to have fun and a family time. We should incorporate that. I, I'm glad that you brought up many different ideas, including taxes and fees and so on. I think we look at every single option and find the best option that would not only investment now, but toward the future. And I think long-term, we should always think long-term, but, but it doesn't take away that we invest now. And I just want to make clear that, yes, I support the arts, but we have to also be fiscally responsible. And this question go to, or city attorney. Since the, you know, Laura gave me this beautiful presentation, and they're making 14%, so can I put my budget in investment so I can get 14%, so I can have a little more funding next year? Just joking, no, that's, that's a great investment. I just want to thank you very much. I didn't want to put Nora on the spot, but thank you, and we'll continue to support.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dewan. We're going to come back around. I haven't heard, I don't think there are any other colleagues who want to speak for the first time, so Councilor Torres, we're back to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I'm very thankful for the, for the conversations I'm having here with my, with my colleagues, and I'm thankful to Councilmember Foley for, for asking the admission fee. I do want to, I do actually want to just ask, because I know that Councilmember Jimenez brought it up, the Sharks SAP Center is excluded from having an admissions fee because of the contract, right?
That is correct. Currently, within their contract, that is something that we agreed as a city, we would not pursue, and in the future, that potentially could change, but clearly isn't given.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Nancy. And the reason why I brought that up is because already I've been having numerous meetings with our arts organizations, and Hammer Theater will be impacted if we do an admissions fee, Opera San Jose, right? And so for us, you know, I'm going to say, of course, a multi-billion-dollar sports organization doesn't have an admissions fee, right? Who could afford it, by the way? But I know that folks like who operate Hammer Theater can afford it, folks like Opera San Jose might be impacted, so that's why, that's why I asked that question. And then the, the other one is, before I do go on to my, just a little message to my councilman, to my colleagues, before I, before I yield my time to, to the mayor, why did we go from, why did we, what was the decision on why we went from the 2% to 1% on the public arts? Why did we lower that in 2020, I think?
I believe it was 2008.
2008.
Thank you for that question. I want to say that in 2008, we did a revision to our Public Art Master Plan, and we had a 2% for art on capital improvement projects at our city capital improvement projects. And what we did at that time is we expanded the eligibility of more projects that the lowered percent would be applied towards. However, I will say, several years ago, we did an additional amendment to our policy that made environmental services projects ineligible. So, you know, there was an expansion of eligible projects, but then it contracted a little bit. So I just wanted to point, point out that history.
Great. And then I think this is to Lee, because I think I've, I've been the one asking for polling for, for everything. You don't need direction from us on polling for the potential bond measures or parcel tax or voter initiative funding source?
No, we don't need direction. It's something that we constantly look at, even when we did Measure B, the sale, the last sales tax, it was something that we had tested as part of that. We had tested on the capital side when we did Measure T, the cultural facilities. As Jim mentioned, that's, that's been a concern of ours for a while. I would say that one got relatively close to being politically feasible, and even as, as late as last year, when we went out to look at polling, just in general, this was tested. I would say, I think the, some of the hurdles that we see is the voter viability around some of this. It's very low compared to where our residents are around crime and homelessness, given kind of what we reported out to you on Tuesday. So luckily, we have a very active arts community, because it would need to be a very broad effort and probably a multi-year effort to get something passed.
Great, great, thank you. Thank you for that. And then, you know, this is a message to, to my colleagues. I urge my colleagues to take the content of today's session into strong consideration, that these potential funding opportunities hopefully grow legs and make their way by, make their way back to us. I know a few folks have said it, but I know that I've said it time and time again, not only on the campaign trail, but in private meetings with our arts organizations, we need to, we need to spend the money to, to make money. And so I do look forward to, for all of us, supporting that this, this works, so we can leverage our downtown as a, as a major city center that serves, that serves all of us, right? Our arts organization, our businesses, our, our neighborhood leaders, folks who come in to all the amazing, amazing activities that, that, that Team San Jose helps us with, or sports, the Sports Authority helps us with. So thank you all for, for, for the questions and the conversation, and, and I hope that we can, we can finally find funding, permanent funding for our arts organizations. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilor Jimenez, did you?
Yeah, just a quick thing, you know, I asked my team yesterday if I can get a copy of everything that was going to be presented today. I don't think it was available, and so I think to the, maybe it was just me, but I didn't see the presentation until today.
The format is a little bit different, but it is on a link to the agenda. So if you go after item 10, you'll see a link, and that's where you can download the memo and the full presentation.
Okay, thank you, I'll do that. I just wasn't sure about that, but, yeah, I think some of us missed it. Thank you so much.
Of course. And if I may add just one very quick thing, in regards to the admissions fee, we would do additional studies, just to reiterate what David said, is we wouldn't want it to be a disincentive or something that would harm, you know, our arts organizations or nonprofits or small venues. So that would be definitely something we would consider as part of the analysis.
But it wouldn't cost a million dollars.
Good. All right. Thank you, colleagues, for really thoughtful comments and questions. Thanks again to staff for the thorough presentation. You know, I'll just add my two cents here that looking at the revenue streams, obviously there are always trade-offs, there's no, as economists like to say, there's no, there's no free lunch, so all of these come with their challenges and trade-offs. I do think that there's a very compelling case to be made for trying to identify highly strategic investments that we have high confidence deliver ROI, which is why I'm so interested in hearing specific ideas and proposals, and will likely ask for that through my March budget message, that we actually go explore what, what is something new we could do. We know how successful many of our large destination events are. Is, are we talking about adding to those, or what, what is the proposal? What are the types of things you'd be asking the council to ultimately make a strategic general fund investment in, and what's the expected ROI? Same goes for how it'd be spent on marketing promotion, to make sure we're getting people here. I think the admissions fee is absolutely worthy of greater exploration. It's a more immediate and targeted and seemingly politically viable approach, and though I, though I appreciate the caveats raised by Councilor Torres, and would need to be a very inclusive exploration here, so that we're understanding any potential and intended consequences or impacts. And then finally, you know, I'll just, as I think many colleagues feel, you know, very interested in looking at ballot opportunities in the future. I think Lee has outlined some of the challenges there. I do believe that we have done a tremendous job as an organization here of building trust with the public through our use of the Measure T funds. And at some point, I think we will want to go back to looking at infrastructure from a slightly different lens. What, what other kinds of public infrastructure do we have that really matters to our community? Parks, libraries, community centers, cultural facilities, and so forth. And I don't think it's going to be an easy hill to climb. It's certainly not viable this cycle, and it may not be next cycle, but I think it's a conversation and exploration we need to have, and we need to be thinking long-term about making a significant intergenerational investment in key public infrastructure and facilities. It's certainly worth, you know, including in that, some, some conversation about potential sales tax measures, though again, even potentially harder to the points Lee made earlier. So those are just a few final reactions I have after listening to colleagues and hearing the presentation. I want to make sure we hear from members of the public. Tony, I assume you have some yellow comment cards? Jennifer, did you want to chime in?
Actually, I would like, Jim, can you clarify, just so everybody, the council and the public understand, about expenditures in, in marketing funds and how it impacts our city budget?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to, just to say a couple of things on that. So for sure, when we do, and Team San Jose does destination marketing, there is an economic impact that is beneficial to the, to the broader community. It does have an impact on city revenues broadly. But when we think about specific investments where you make expenditure, I, when we go into, into the budget process and assume some sort of revenues, I have to be able to certify that those revenues will really come in. And so the only times we really do, like, we're going to make an expense and assume the revenue comes in to off that, offset that expense, is normally when there is money already owed to us, for sure. Like, for example, we did the business tax amnesty program, where we did some one-time investments, assuming that was going to be offset by people paying us back for the money that they already owed us. So that's sort of a pure supply-driven issue, where in this case, we want to stimulate the demand to be able to come here and spend. And so while that is, I know Laura will look me in the eye and say, I'm going to get that money back for the city's revenues, and, but we can't count that on a budgetary basis to offset that, that, that cost in the same year. So I just wanted to be clarified about, that makes sense, but we can't count that as part of an offset.
That's right. Yeah. Thanks, Jennifer and Jim, that's a very important point, I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to turn to public comment. Tony, do we, just based on the number of cards, can we give folks two minutes and hear from everyone?
Yes, I have 12 cards for 24 minutes.
Perfect, let's do it.
Emily, and then first person who comes down, go to the microphone. Other people, if you sit in the front row, we can move people through quicker. So I have Emily, Shawna, Nicholas, Katrina, and Vanessa to start with.
Hello. This is very different from what I usually do. I am usually very much behind the scenes. I am the charge artist at Opera San Jose. I paint their sets, as well as I have painted for other places within the area, Palo Alto Children's Theater. Art is very near and dear to my heart. I can't tell you where I would be or who I would be without arts funding, but I can tell you who I get to be every day with arts funding. As somebody who is neurodivergent, I have struggled with traditional schooling, and I knew that an office job would not be on the table for me. And without arts funding and amazing teachers and opportunities, I would not get to make a living and have my, my dream job every day, painting. I would not have found a career where I get to thrive, and I live downtown in all of the art that is provided for me here. And I would not now get to hire and grow the next generation of painters at Opera San Jose. Thank you. Thank you, next speaker.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shawna Lucy, and I'm the General Director of Opera San Jose. And I'm thrilled to be here this morning as part of this discussion, and so happy that we're having it. We're very fortunate at the opera to work very closely with the Office of Cultural Administration. Office of Cultural Affairs, and consider the city as one of our nearest and dearest partners in bringing great operatic performances to our city. For those who don't know, we are the largest performing arts employer in the South Bay. And in fact, in the course of our season, we provide free housing for 54 artists here in San Jose. We're so proud to bring great performances to the stage. Unfortunately, we've had five years of cost growth without five years of revenue growth. So I know I don't speak just for the opera, but I speak for all arts organizations, that this is a critical time for us, an existential time. I'm thrilled that we've been identified as one of the key economic drivers for life and vibrancy downtown. We're so proud of that. At our most recent First Friday Sofa offerings, we not only had a pinata, we had cupcakes from Peter's Bakery, we provided free operatic concerts for pedestrians, they were offered tours of the California Theater, a string quartet, and an amazing performance on the organ there. So we want to be a partner and continue to help provide arts and jobs here. And we're so grateful for your consideration, because as I said, these are existential times for all arts organizations. And we need your help to continue to thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nicholas Vazquez Gerst. I've been a resident of San Jose since 2017 in Little Portugal, right on the edge of downtown. I'm here as a representative of Opera San Jose. I have worked at Opera San Jose since 2015. If you have seen any production there since then, except for a few small cases where there were no chorus, I was either in the chorus or a small role. So if you've seen a production in the past decade, I've probably been in it. I also sing at San Francisco Opera as well in their chorus. And on top of that, since 2022, I've been Opera San Jose's Marketing Manager as well. So if you've seen an uptick in any social media posts, that is my work. Opera San Jose is not only my artistic home, but they have given me a space to grow musically and professionally. And without Opera San Jose and the artistic community of San Jose, we would not be the vibrant and bright city that we are. Thank you for your consideration and supporting the arts.
I did get several other cards added, so I'm going to just ask that people come down quickly when you're called. Before you speak, I'd also like to call down Chris, Alexandra, and Brendan. Go ahead.
Morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm really happy and excited that you are taking this on. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Katrina Stevens, the President and CEO for the Tech Interactive. I'm here to really ask you to consider sustainable funding for organizations like ours. The Tech, it's a nonprofit. We serve our community well, especially kids and families who don't have access to STEM. And we bring visitors to downtown San Jose. We have 100,000 students who come on field trips to us every year. About 50% of those are Title I schools, and we actually have full scholarships and transportation for them. We serve approximately 350 visitors, 350,000 visitors every year. That was a half million before the pandemic. Our annual Tech Challenge brings 10,000 people downtown to the convention center. We employ 160 staff. About 71% of our visitors identify as people of color. Hosting a national event at the White House in April, that's going to put AI for education for K-12 on the map, putting San Jose on the map for that. You're also welcome to come to that. But we bring money and we bring people downtown to San Jose, as well as really serving the community. The Tech in San Jose at large can be part of a tech tourism. Visitors want to visit Silicon Valley, and they don't really know where to go. And so we can be part of that. And that's something that we're all kind of have conversations around. Visitors wanted to, one of the things that we're really thinking about, as I've launched a kind of quiet phase of a campaign, is to really think about, how do we make ourselves a destination spot? Right now, about 60% of our people come from within a 10-mile radius, but we really actually want us to shift gears. I can do and I can raise funds for events, exhibits, or teacher training programs. In fact, I raised about $15 million of non-government funding to support the city-owned building and support our community programs. We bring a significant amount of private funding in. However, it's incredibly difficult for me to be able to raise funds for operating costs. I need a more stable source of revenue for general opera costs, so I can avoid closing more days, and so I can focus on designing experiences.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Vanessa Sheehan, the Co-Executive Director of the Mexican Heritage Plaza. For the past year or so, the plaza has been leading efforts in East San Jose to establish a cultural district with the Mexican Heritage Plaza at its center. Like my colleagues here, we believe the arts, cultures, and traditions of our city are critical to our community life. In addition, all the programs, events, and celebrations tied to arts and culture help to make all of San Jose an attraction, even those areas outside of the downtown core. The plaza's signature events draw thousands of people each year to East San Jose. Therefore, it is important for the city to invest in arts initiatives like this one, and be proactive in securing financial resources needed in order to implement it. It is an investment in the current and future vibrancy of San Jose. Thank you to everyone who put this analysis together. The plaza hopes that specific funding sources for the arts, such as those mentioned by my colleagues, like the TOT, will be given serious reconsideration, so the arts sector could be a real partner in the city's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, Karen and Sayre, come on down.
Good morning. Thank you for this conversation today. My name is Alexandra Urbanowski. I am the relatively new CEO of SV Creates, having stepped in when Connie retired in December. Prior to that, I was Associate Director at SV Creates for over six years. And before that, I really had a 30-year career in the greater San Jose arts community, including a number of years as the Managing Director of San Jose Repertory Theater, when we built the Hammer Theater, served on the San Jose Arts Commission. I was Chair of the Convention and Visitors Bureau before Team San Jose was born. And through all those years, the arts have been an anchor in the downtown and in the neighborhoods throughout our city. Businesses and economic cycles have gone up and down, tech companies have come and gone, but the arts have always been here, activating spaces, facilities, parks, empty lots, throughout our city. Arts audiences have spent money on dining and parking, and working artists have paid taxes and spent wages in the local community. The multiplier of numbers that you saw today in the presentation, particularly those ones that Connie presented, come from the Americans for the Arts National Study, but they were informed by local data, which SV Creates managed the collection of, from hundreds of arts events and organizations throughout our city. So we were on the ground witnessing not only the economic impact, but the non-economic value of the arts throughout the city. So we encourage you to dig deep when you're considering these options, critical to our city's short- and long-term success. Please dig deep while considering these. And I want to thank you for taking time with these scenarios and considering. And I also want to just offer our support from SV Creates. We've been a partner with the Office of Cultural Affairs and with the City of San Jose for many decades in arts initiatives. We serve as the Arts Council for the County of Santa Clara, and we're here to serve you and to support you as you work through this really important work. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Excellent. Good morning. I'm Brendan Rossen. I'm Executive Director for San Jose Jazz. Each year, San Jose Jazz draws tens of thousands of visitors to downtown San Jose. These visitors fill thousands of hotel room nights, generate more than 13 million in economic impact, and according to the city's own analysis, contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars directly into the city's coffers through various fees and taxes. San Jose Jazz receives a city grant in support of Summer Fest for $40,000. Thank you. It's appreciated. We, in return, pay the city more than $70,000 in various full-cost recovery fees and services, such as paying for the city's lost revenue from parking meters, because we have closed a street with meters on it. That all there seems to be rather funny math to me. I raise these points to call attention to the importance of this study session. The economic realities of downtown San Jose have changed significantly compared to pre-pandemic. Events of all kinds, such as 10K runs, cosplay conventions, arts and entertainment performances, various social meetups, are taking on a greater and greater responsibility to power the economic engine of downtown. The City of San Jose needs an economic recovery strategy for downtown that is in alignment with these new realities. In addition, the city needs the proper investment tools to take action on the strategies. That is why today's discussion is so important. I would like to call your attention to two specific items brought up in the consultant's analysis. First, number 10, the hotel visitor's tax. The current practice of siphoning off 40% of this tax charged to out-of-town visitors to pay for general fund services is simply being penny-wise and pound foolish. You should direct city staff to put a green check on that item and continue to study it further. Second, item number two, the private percentage for art ordinance. The city council prioritized this item itself in 2020. Some of you were here at that time. In the four years since, precious literal has moved on this. You should direct city staff to get it done.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also come down Natalie. It looks like Carmen. I can't read this handwriting. So we'll just start with Carmen and Natalie. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Karen Kinsel, and I'm a San Jose resident. And I'm here with a group of dedicated community members, San Jose arts advocates, all of us who have spent our entire careers dedicated to the arts and their ability to transform communities. We have all seen firsthand the benefits of the arts, and how they provide individuals, families, and communities benefits, and how they have enlivened and vitalized cities and neighborhoods. The arts are a part of an essential ecosystem that needs the support of our government to restabilize and thrive post-COVID, to then help to continue to bolster our economy and civic life. To that end, on behalf of San Jose arts advocates, I would like to reinforce our position that you direct OEDCA staff to work with us and other stakeholders to return to council with a private percentage for arts ordinance for your consideration prior to the close of fiscal year '24. Again, a private percentage for arts ordinance was included in every other comparable municipality included in the study presented this morning. We also recommend that you direct city staff to conduct further financial modeling of a full or partial reallocation of TOT dollars, and establishing a baseline of TOT revenues allocated to the general fund to support the arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Angie and Anais.
Good morning, Council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Chris Shea. I'm the Senior Vice President for Government Affairs at SAP Center. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this morning, speaking on behalf of the study session we have ongoing. An interesting and poignant conversation occurred at the State Senate this week on this very topic, and I'd like to give you some statistics at the state level. Access to live concerts, entertainments, and professional sporting events bring a great deal of value to Californians. According to the research from Oxford Economics, the live music and entertainment industry generate a total income economic impact of $12.3 billion in the state of California. Of that, 83,000 jobs statewide, and $675 million in total state and local tax revenues. All that to say that growing the pie is one of the most important things we probably should be looking at. Locally, the SAP Center, and I thank you, everybody, for speaking today, but we didn't make the list. We must be item 12 and 13 on city-owned facilities, but we certainly are very proud to be able to shepherd city-owned facilities. We welcome guests, and we accept guests from all over the region to events, and over $2 million per event come in through that. So I'll let to say that anytime we can look at expanding that pie, we are certainly for that, and an investment in the arts, sports, and entertainment, and destination events grows the pie for everybody. So thank you very much this morning for this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I am Natalie Taylor. I am with the Tech Interactive. So San Jose has one thing that no other city in the world has, and we have the brand of being the epicenter of tech tourism and the tech industry. We should be positioning ourselves as that, and should be able to create cutting-edge events and immersive experiences here in San Jose. However, organizations like the Tech and arts and culture institutions spend a significant amount of our time trying to privately fundraise and pay for daily operations and infrastructure. We need to think big. We need to build events, arts, and cultural experiences that stop the scroll and get someone to drive or fly here for a visit. We need to think about building immersive art experiences like Team Labs in Tokyo, Meow Wolf, and the Sphere in Las Vegas. The intersection of art and technology is an area we can all partner on. This will drive tourism and the local community. A destination marketing campaign and paying for the infrastructure of our building will certainly help us reallocate our internal resources and funding to focus on building truly extraordinary experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello and good morning. I'm Sarah Batten, Executive Director of the San Jose Museum of Art, and I am also a resident of East San Jose. The National Culture Track Survey of Cultural Consumers found that the number-one reason for participation is having fun. With SJMA's core institutional value of contributing to the revitalization of downtown San Jose, we operate a vibrant place to gather, have fun, enjoy food and beverages, and bring retail vitality through our store. Social isolation is one of the greatest problems affecting our citizens' mental health today. And the arts and culture programs that the San Jose community presents fill this need. Despite scarce resources, our exhibitions and education programs reach 100,000 people and school students annually, in downtown and out in the schools in all of your districts. We're also a major employer with 77 staff, and that includes a paid group of 27 local artists. And we are also the grateful stewards of a city-owned building, and host partner programs with performing arts organizations who do not have a permanent home. Investment in the arts and culture are proven drivers of San Jose visitation and economic impact, along with our events and hospitality partners. We drive traffic to the downtown core. We have the data, and so do you. We are aligned with the measures outlined by the San Jose Arts Advocates, and ask you to direct city staff to conduct further financial modeling to increase funding to the arts. Increased investment in the arts will be your greatest legacy as city leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Wiza Uimora and Erin.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I just want to thank you, along with the city staff and the consultants in our room here, of cultural workers, artists, arts advocates, and hospitality folks, that all know that our interconnected relationships and ecosystems are really, is going to what's going to help the City of San Jose recover from the pandemic and create a city where everyone can thrive. So you've heard all the great recommendations. I believe we should really look at all the green lights, and then the yellows and oranges, saying, how do we do them faster? How do we go? Because this is the time right now that we need to invest in this sector. What we haven't talked about today is the fact that those of us that are here, we are here because of ARPA money, because of backfilling the last several years. It's because private philanthropy has stepped up. The news right now is because everyone stepped up, and the federal government did that, we're all hitting a fiscal cliff. In the next several years, we're going to see less resources, not only from TOT, that thankfully appreciate all the backfill, but from other sectors as well. Nationally, arts funders, there's less of them, and the reality is, our work is more intersectional, right? We help make affordable housing a beautiful place, and also, a lot of our artists and community members need beautiful, affordable housing, right? So it's not an either-or conversation. Arts are integral to everyone's life. It's what makes San Jose special, and it builds bridges and uplifts all the cultures here. So this is a moral question to all of you. It's also an economic one, and I get that because I run a budget and pay people. But this is the time to not only double down, but triple down in your investment. Otherwise, this city is going to lose its soul, and it won't be the community we need it to be for every
Thank you. Next speaker.
Greetings, Council. My name is Carmen Gaines. I was born, raised, and currently reside in San Jose. I am an arts advocate and the Deputy Director for Local Color. I believe Carrie Aden Hapner said it all in describing what ADST stands for and its reciprocity through return of interest, both through economically and qualitatively. At a minimum, I believe that the Art for Private Development Ordinance should be implemented through collaborative discussions. This is happening voluntarily. This is happening voluntarily, and it should be a standard as well. Trust from your own experiences, the value of San Jose's arts and culture is what makes the city a desirable place to live and visit for its uniqueness. Consider the intersectionality of the return of interest that Angie just described. Think about when Bart arrives to the Deir el-Dawn. Will visitors be coming to San Jose to visit and experience what we have to offer? Or will be San Joseans be taking their tax revenue and jobs to find culture elsewhere? Recommendation 10 should stay on the table as well. If there isn't this investment taken away from the, what can fund the arts, these other increases will have less of an impact. This strategy increases the efficiency and planning. It helps to pay, train, and retain skilled creative workforce in organizations who are in turn paying their fair share to other city services, including the police department, fire, and health. To the coffers of other city departments, it will also increase the city's capacity to maintain our public facilities and make them better for everyone. The goal is to take a step towards a better commonwealth. And with my remaining time, I must be remiss to say, all eyes on RPA.
Thank you. Next speaker. I also have Bill and a card that I can't read except for the word society. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Erin Salazar. I am a working artist here in San Jose. And nine years ago, I founded an organization called Local Color. Local Color is a woman-powered organization building equitable pathways for artists to thrive. In the last nine years, we have raised, redistributed, and paid out over 1.2 million to over 300 independent artists facilitating over 250 murals in San Jose and beyond. We have reactivated 69,000 square feet of otherwise vacant spaces as affordable studio spaces, and we have done so largely through private funding and foundations. In fact, murals mentioned in this very discussion, shown in this presentation, have been facilitated by our organization. Investments in art and culture show the world who we are and who we want to be. We are a culturally rich and diverse city. I'm aligned with the San Jose arts advocates' push for directing city staff to reconsider the TOT allocation and to push for the percent for private art. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Anais Bueno. I am the founder and CEO of Callistica Arts, which is located in downtown San Jose. We are a local nonprofit that supports childrens, families, and adults in dance, yoga, drum circles, singing, and art. We have helped hundreds of our local community members coming through our doors to fulfill and nourish their soul with creative expression. I am born and raised in San Jose and went to Lincoln High School, which is a performing arts magnet school. I grew up neighbors to Omar Torres down in, you know, the little barrio right downtown. And I'm also the mother of four young children. While in meditation a few years ago, I received the guidance to open a space that will help our community thrive with holistic and healing arts. This past December, we had the opportunity to perform onstage in downtown San Jose at Christmas in the Park. Several students, including my own children and myself, poured their hearts onstage. It felt amazing to share my craft and love of dance with the community. Having had the option to move out of the area that is more affordable for my family, I always say no because San Jose is my home. I know I'm guided to help our community. My dream is to lead and organize a festival in downtown San Jose showcasing local culture, arts, and families. Thank you for helping our community thrive in creative arts.
Thank you. Next speaker. I also received a card from Michael.
Hi, my name is Bill Palmer. I'm a retired Cisco engineer, and I've had a complete change. I now am a board member of the American Beethoven Society over at San Jose State. And my son was a San Jose State student. And I'm a musician. I've performed at San Jose State a number of times as well. We are very, very much in favor of the San Jose arts advocacy recommendation to you that more of the TOT funds be directed to the ADD initiatives and also the percent for the arts. Our organization draws people from all over the world to come study at San Jose State. Our collection is one of the two largest collections in the world. The other one is in Beethoven's birthplace. And this time last year, we were having a conference that drew performers and scholars from all over the world spending their money in San Jose. So, you know, the arts has a positive payoff for the City of San Jose, and we encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Tony, sorry, just before we jump in, how many more cards do we have?
There's, I've called all names.
Great.
So I have, yeah.
Great.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Wiza Uimora. I'm executive director for San Jose Taiko. I'm also speaking today as a wife, mother, and longtime resident of this wonderful city. Arts and culture events are the physical embodiment of our lauded diversity. For a city struggling to still define itself and create its brand, it is often remarked about our impeccable, our numerous diverse arts and culture scene that gives voice to our residents of our community. Even though this is under the guise of arts and hospitality funding, I wanted to reiterate that we are not asking for special consideration. We do not want to be pitted against social services or affordable housing. We are, as the many of many artists and cultural workers of this community, we are residents, small business owners, parents, students, and teachers in our schools through our arts education programs. For 50 years, San Jose Taiko has taken the name of this city across the nation and across the globe in an effort to bring attention to our wonderful and blessed community of diverse individuals. We are, even though we've been encouraged to change our name from San Jose Taiko, we have continued to keep it because we are San Jose proud. And right now, we're just asking you to be proud of us and the many artists in this room by investing in our futures and making it sustainable for us to be here. We are part of your campaigns and our marketing to distribute the name of San Jose across the world. And we just want caution you against taking us for granted.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, city council, and city staff, my name is Michael Mulcahy. I'm a founding board member of Team San Jose, a former executive director of Children's Musical Theater of San Jose. I grew up on the stages in San Jose and have been involved in arts and tourism leadership for 30 years. I submitted a letter today, and I'm just going to read you one short passage, which I think sort of helps to tell the urgency. I urge you not to patch the gap with one-time funding, making a commitment that will mean stability and trust in the system and the organization's fueling it. A patch would slow a lack of, would show a lack of confidence and perpetuate the scarcity culture and competition for funds that our arts agencies have dealt with for far too long. When we know with data, the arts and culture is what's bringing people into our city and our downtown. We need to believe in the power of arts and destination marketing by investing in a vision for San Jose that embraces this important convergence. Let the results tell the story. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have that one last speaker card. I can't read the handwriting, but it ends with the word society, but there's no individual name. Okay, you're done. Back to council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Thank you all for your testimony and comments today. Really appreciate the contributions you make to our community and giving voice to the power of arts and culture. So we appreciate the engagement. We're going to keep having this conversation as a council as we go through this budget process and beyond. Thanks again to staff for a great study session. Appreciate it. We're adjourned.